Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. Could we first please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first, anybody have any questions, comments about the correspondence?
That's important.
No.
Okay. We move on to the meeting minutes of August 15th, 2022. Any comments, corrections?
None.
All right, there's no concerns. Do I have a motion to pass the meeting minutes of August 15th, 2022?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Okay, next on the, or first on the agenda in the regular portion of the meeting is Thermodynamics Corp. This is a decision statement. Location's 2989 Navajo Street. Hey, how are you?
Good.
Have you had a chance to look over the resolution?
Um, I didn't. I think Peter looked over everything and just asked me to come attend.
Any issues or?
No, not that, uh...
Any concerns from the board?
No.
None here.
Nope.
This is gonna be a great project.
Yep.
All right, if there's no issues, do I have a motion to declare lead agency?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Next, do we have a motion to approve the neg deck in front of us?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And then lastly, we have a resolution approving a lighting plan for the Thermodynamics Corp. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
You're all set.
Great, thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.
Good luck to you.
All right, thank you.
Best of luck with the business.
All right, thanks a lot.
Take care. That's gonna be nice business over there. Okay, next we have Uncle Giuseppe's Marketplace. This is also a decision statement. Location's 329 Downing Drive. No one here?
Uh, no, they couldn't make it.
They're not making it?
No.
Any comments, concerns from the board?
None here.
John?
Nothing here, no.
Counselor?
Nothing from me.
Okay, then we have a resolution approving the interior sidewalk alterations for the Uncle Giuseppe's Marketplace at 335 Downing Drive. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
That place is beautiful. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Granite Knolls Solar Project. This is an adjourned public hearing. 2975 Stony Street. Do I have to reopen the public hearing if it's adjourned?
Adjourned.
Continue it? How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. Darius Chef Azada with the law firm Harris Beach, here with engineer of record Eric Redding. We were here a few months back at the planning board meeting, the public hearing. I believe there were some comments about our initial plan, specifically the ground mounts on the property. We've worked with staff and the town itself to reduce the project considerably, to remove the ground mounts. Our project now is only the carports and the energy storage facility, small energy storage facility, to get the energy where it needs to go. We've worked with staff to work on lighting, work on drainage, work on gutters, et cetera. So we think we're in a position to move this forward. We'd have to do so to be able to start the project in November, which was requested by the recreation department. We have our engineer here, if there's any questions you have specifically about the project. Eric?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Eric Redding with Bergman. Yeah, and as Darius mentioned, major change was eliminating the ground-mounted system, as well as the battery storage component. We did go to the conservation board last week, and we did receive some comments from them. We have no objection to any of the comments. One was changing out some of the species, as far as the trees go, for screening, and that's okay. An educational sign within the park, we think, is a great idea. So putting that maybe near the fields, between the fields and the carport system, would be a great addition as well. So we have no objections to anything from that.
Excuse me, at the last meeting, we also asked you to touch base with your neighbors next door, to see if there was any issues with the lack of screening, to look at the panels, and to meet with staff to discuss the screening, because I know we've been very consistent with these things being, as per our code, kind of invisible.
Yep, so what we did was, we did meet with Robin and John. We did look at different angles of, in the renderings. And what we did was, we did add a few more trees, screen trees, along Stony Street, kind of in the area where the ground-mounted array was, so that from Stony Street, you can't see anything, as well as the entrance driving up into the park. We left the row of screening at the crest of the hill, basically. So we did update the renderings to show that there's gonna be no view of the carport from those different vantage points. And then with the downlighting, as well as having it fully shielded, in addition to the screen trees, there's gonna be very little visual impact as you drive up the driveway into the park.
Everybody had an opportunity to take a look at the plans?
Yes.
Anybody have any issues, concerns?
Do you wanna show that on the screen?
I will tell you, looking at this, I see you've worked to improve things. I still am concerned where, you know, some of these renderings basically so, show, I don't wanna say garbage, but it looks like, I mean, something that would be, you know, if that was in front of someone's yard, the town might write him a notice of violation to clean it up.
Oh, from the photos that we took?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, those are just, yeah, the photos.
So some of these, I think, need still a little work. I know you've been putting time into it. Is there any way to put a note in there that there's, to be field adjustments or additional?
Well, you can have a condition, that they continue to work on the visual aspects of the project to your satisfaction. Same with the lighting, which is already in the draft.
Right.
And then we have a discussion point about, as we often do on projects, about the stormwater plan.
Okay.
So those can be conditioned. Stormwater will have to, whatever the final iteration of that is, and we may be looking at it tonight, but we have to get Dan, CRC, the town engineer, to look at it. We have to make sure that DEP is fine with it. So once that is concluded, if there's any changes to the original plan, that's your approval, and you have to approve that. So that would come back to you normally, so that needs to be a condition. The lighting, I think that we just need to look at the fixtures, how they're placed, because they are being installed under a canopy, and it's also angled. So we just have to make sure that's just being really, really detailed, so that we're making sure we're doing the best we can with that. And that's certainly the type of item that can be a condition, because that's really a fine design tuning, the placement, and what shielding that we can get. And then in terms of the screening, I think one of your concerns is, as you come up the driveway from the Shreveau School, right? You can add screening there, so we can certainly take a look at what needs to be added to that, and that can be to your satisfaction, so. I know that they have a concern about ordering times of equipment, so you can move forward with the resolution and have those three items as conditions that can be worked on. Certainly landscaping is not something that we need to be concerned with today on September 12th. We have plenty of time to get that done, because by the time the screening needs to go in, it's going to be going in in the springtime, I imagine.
Correct.
So those things can be done at a later time. Now, the stormwater plan just needs to be looked at by DEP and the town engineer to their acceptance. I don't think that there's any real changes, other than concentrating some of the water in the gutters, but they still go down to impervious areas, and eventually that is captured in some catch basins, I believe, right?
Yes, yep, the existing system.
The only thing that we have to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's on is that we do plan to, and we're coordinating with this group, to pave underneath the canopy, but that's a separate effort, but it needs some coordination with these guys and the engineer that we have, so. Just to make sure that that all works out, you know, that may need to come back to you if it's changes that are from the orig, are changing the stormwater regime from the original approval, that's all.
Okay.
So that can be a condition as well, because that's really, you know, smaller design changes. There's already catch basins there, there's already a storm basin there. I don't know that there's going to be, the only thing I can think of, and I'm not an engineer, is, you know, some of the water will be concentrated, and there might be a time, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, a time of concentration about when all the water is actually getting to these points. That's all really that I can really think of, but, you know, it's not up to us, so.
It'll be negligible.
Yeah, I think-
But that all makes sense?
Yeah, that all makes sense, yep.
On the screening, just so we can know now, is there any specific location, if we have the plan, the landscaping plan, where we have the trees done coming up the driveway?
Yep.
Block, is there any specific location you'd want more trees, or a different tree to?
Yeah, I mean, I think-
Like here, yes.
So who prepared this? Was it the landscape architect, or was the engineering department?
Uh, landscape architect.
Landscape architect. All right, so we've worked with other applicants. There was one on Foothill Street, Con Ed, others on farms. We've been very consistent, and we've been really holding that bar high, you know, as per the code, that these things are not visual, all right? I know Con Ed went back two or three times, worked out some different plans, and some stuff-
We were the engineers on that project as well.
Okay, so you know what they did there, all right? And there was another company that showed the different angles, that was gonna, but if you look at some of this, I mean, you know, I think this one's an improvement, but there's still, you know, in time, these will grow, but that is something that, you know-
But, Richie, you're location three?
This is, yeah, location three, which is, we used to look at the top, but it's still hitting that end.
Are you concerned about, I mean, a lot of invasives and some of the growth that's there? I mean, that's not part of the screening.
No, it's not, but it's shown, I think, as the screening. You can't see anything because of what's there. And I just wanna make sure-
Yep.
-that at the end of the day, this is, so I'm happy with the note, that we could make sure this gets addressed. But I wanna make sure, especially-
Absolutely.
This is a town project, and, you know, there are people out there that will say that we, we, you know, we relied on the town and not so much on the others.
And one thing in that area that you're mentioning, we are leaving more trees there. So now that we eliminated the ground mount, there's substantial less tree clearing that we have to do for shading, since we don't have to worry about that anymore. So that whole, basically, patch of trees right there is gonna remain, so we don't have to remove them or anything like that.
And I also wanna say, we appreciate all the work you've done to, I think, address the concerns that, from one of the meetings, we got pummeled up there, but...
I wouldn't like those ground mounts, so we listen.
No. I do see we have members from the Parks Board, and this is a public, a continued public hearing, so if everybody's right, we'll reach out to the audience. Anybody from the audience?
And the plan will be to start in November and finish before the season, so we don't interrupt the Parks Department's, you know, program at that site.
So does anybody from the audience care to make any comments? Come on up.
You're doing a fine day. PJ Kaminski, Vice Chair, Parks and Rec Commission. So I just wanna thank you guys, you did a great job, so thank you for your due diligence and making sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. The only concern I already had was voiced with the lighting, and how that's actually gonna be positioned underneath the sloped angles. I'm not sure if it's for your resolution, or it's for, if it, I haven't got a chance to go back and check it since I saw your resolution today. The, talk about the maintenance of the trees and everything else, we don't really, there's never any mention of the maintenance of the actual facility. So say a panel gets struck by lightning, or one of the glass panels was hanging off on the side, like, there are timeliness to come back and repair that. Hasn't been addressed anywhere that I've seen. It may be in the original agreement, I don't remember seeing it, but I wasn't sure if it's something you wanna include in your conditions.
Are you suggesting that the legal responsibility hasn't been allocated on this?
I don't know that, I'm asking.
We, it's our property, we wanna fix it right away if something's wrong, so we, you know, we're committed to that.
Normally, we, we normally require, you know, maintenance bonds, you know, maintenance agreements and-
Well, there's a decommissioning bond in here, which is one thing, and at the end of the day, somebody comes, takes it out. I still don't see, I haven't seen anything that I remember of anything as far as assuring that if there's a maintenance issue, it's gonna resolve in a timely manner, in a way that, my concern is always, something happens at the front, you shut off the whole parking lot to the whole entire park, the place. And if you shut off the parking lot to the place, then we don't have a facility. So that's, it's just about timeliness. I mean, anything can happen, I understand that, trees could fall down in our parks too, but it's something that I haven't seen. Also, on page six of your draft resolution, thank you very kindly for sending it, there's this one part that I didn't really like. It's in your, "Be further resolved, the owner, operator, manager of the solar generator system must conduct annual inspections." It's about like, if there's any vegetations, it's gotta be dead or deceased. You say that it's actually to be done by the site owner, since we are the site owner, I don't want it to be the site owner.
Site operator, perhaps?
I think it should be the site operator, or the solar generating system owner, one of those, not the site owner. I just don't wanna be on the hook for having to go send our Parks guys to go fix trees. So that was it, those are the only comments I had, other than that, I really appreciate you guys working with us, I hope this all works out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Those are fine.
Okay. Owner, operator, or manager?
Yeah.
The maintenance issue?
Yeah.
You know, I don't think it's, I'll defer to Jim, but I don't think it's this board's-
Probably town board, right?
We actually will have an agreement, as part of our initial agreement references, that we will maintain the site, our equipment.
Right, and so I think it's, maybe you send a note to the town board recommending that that issue is dealt with, between the town and the operator? But I don't think it's something that goes in a site approval for this board. It's like making sure that the windows, if they're broken, are repaired by the building owner, you know, in a day or something, and I don't think that's, comes up here.
That wouldn't go in a special use permit?
The maintenance of the-
Maintenance of the facility, just?
Maintenance of the site does. Maintenance of the site and landscaping, that is, that in our zoning code is enforceable. Building maintenance is enforceable under the building code. But we don't, I don't, we don't have to call out, for instance, that the site needs to be maintained, you know, the way it's designed, because we have that control embedded in the zoning code. And we don't have to call out, for instance, to maintain the building in a certain fashion, because that is control, you have that enforcement capability in the building code.
I was just-
You could call it out as a concern, if you care to, but-
I was just addressing the comment that was made, whether or not that issue needs to be addressed by us at all, you know?
Whether a solar panel, for instance, is damaged and needs to be replaced, I happen to think not.
Okay.
Like I said, I'll defer to Jim if he has a different opinion.
Not only that, you know, even the maintenance of the whole structure and stuff like that, you know, because, I gotta tell you, I was in Casadonia or something like that, New York. I was up there visiting colleges with my kid just the past week. I passed, I came across a solar farm, ground-mounted. It's got nothing to do with this, but, you know, it was vastly overgrown, it was, I'm sure it looked lovely when they put it in, but, you know, that is one of the major concerns that I'm getting feedback on, as a town guy.
That we do have.
Yeah.
That topic we do address in the proposed resolution.
Right. All right, so it sounds like this is a matter with the contract with the town board.
I would think so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Takes it out of my hands.
Anybody else from the audience? Anybody else from the board?
Nope.
Nope. John?
Just the three things that we talked about, I think, should be conditions to be resolved, and I think we can move forward on those and get those squared away between now and November, and in the meantime, they can move forward on their other backside requirements.
Okay.
Ordering material.
You guys all right with that?
Yeah.
All right, we have in front of us a resolution approving a site plan-
Close the hearing.
Yes. Thank you very much, Counsel. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a resolution approving a site plan, special use permit for a large-scale solar energy system, and tree permit for the Granite Knolls Solar Project, as amended. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Good luck with the project. Okay. Okay, next we have a public informational hearing. This is the Wendy's at the Staples Plaza, location's 3399 Cram Pound Road. Do I have a motion to open the public informational hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
How are you?
Good. Good evening, board members, Jennifer Porter, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Wenesco Yorktown LLC, which is a Wendy's franchisee. We were previously in front of this board for two work sessions earlier this summer, as well as had a staff meeting, and we were previously in front of Ibaka as well, for their informal feedback, and intend on going back to them next week for our follow-up meeting. So tonight, we're here for the public informational hearing, so I have brought with us Philip Anastas with a Wenesco, who's here to speak to operations, he'll speak to number of employees, hours of operation, what brought them to the site, and give you general background, which I know the board is familiar with from previous appearances, but for the benefit of the public. And then we also have Dan Chanel, who is here on behalf of Dynamic, who's going to speak to you on site engineering. He'll give a brief overview of the plans that have been presented, as well as some of the changes that were made based on discussions and we, feedback we received from the board in the context of our staff meeting, as well as feedback from the board at earlier meetings. So unless the board has any questions, I'd like to have Mr. Anastas.
Well, thanks for having me tonight. My name is Philip Anastas, I am a franchise owner, and one of the owners of Wenesco Restaurants. We're excited to be here tonight, we've been looking forward to this. I became a Wendy's franchisee about 12 years ago, and it's been a great experience for me, and I'm actively involved in our restaurants, in both developing and operating our business. You also met my business partner, Kevin Woodside. Again, he's very actively involved in our restaurant operations as well. We're active, we're not passive investors, we're inside our restaurants and very involved in the operations. Educational background is in hospitality, restaurant, and hotel management, both professionally and background education. We're here to grow our business. We invest in our people, we invest in our facilities, we remodel our restaurants. This year, we did two remodels, and we look to grow our business. This week, we're gonna be opening our 20th restaurant in West New York, New Jersey. And we have 19 locations right now, that'll be our 20th. We have 10 locations in New York, three in the Bronx, three in Westchester, three in Rockland, one in Harriman, in Orange County, as well as New Jersey. We have what we think is a strong team. Both our field teams are very strong, we have four district managers. I brought Leo with me today, he's one of our very experienced district managers. Actually, he oversees our locations in Yonkers and Elmsford, and also Hawthorne, in addition to some in Rockland as well. Our offices are in Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, where we have our payroll, our HR, we've got a real good support team. So we are approved for Wendy's for growth, and we feel like we're in a good position to grow as well. Why Yorktown? Well, it's a vibrant business community, one that I know well. I'm a Westchester resident myself, and this is something that we've been trying to do. We've been looking at sites for a number of years, but struggled to find a site that really worked. We tried to force a few sites on our end, but we just didn't get green lights for everything. Either the building was gonna be a little too small, the flow around the building just wasn't gonna work operationally, and we were at the point where we just couldn't find the site, and our broker called us up, kind of at the last minute, and said, hey, talk to your folks at Erstat Biddle, which we've known for other deals, and there's an opportunity for this site here, for the Dunkin' Donuts site. We looked at it, the building size worked for us, the flow around the building worked for us, it was just, this is, this is good, we're excited. So that's why we presented our plans to you guys. Our goal is to, you know, build a great place for our employees to work, and a great place for the community to come and enjoy a meal. And if we're successful, we'll be actively involved in your community, giving back as much as we can. As far as the timing, you know, it depends on how long the process goes, but we've already ordered equipment, we've ordered building materials. We're ready to go. A project like this could take three months, but there's always the unexpected. We turn on the equipment, and something doesn't work, and it adds an extra week, or we're heading into weather months where the weather might impact our construction. But typically, that would be our construction period. We work with two contractors that are very experienced in this type of work, Daggett Construction and Meridian Construction. This project would go to Meridian Construction, they're based out of Monroe, New York. They did two remodels for us this year, they built the Yonkers site for us, they did work in Elmsford. It's just a group that we work very well with. As far as operations, a restaurant of this size would be hiring about 35 employees. We have a mix, mostly full-time, actually, but it would be a mix of full-time and part-time. We have a district manager overseeing five restaurants, this would be one of them. We have a general manager, and management positions below restaurant manager, shift managers, team trainers, team leaders, and team members. The restaurant would be open at 6:30 in the morning, we do serve breakfast. We started breakfast in 2020, March 2020, right before everything changed. And we're still trying to get people to know that we serve breakfast, and it's a good breakfast. We serve breakfast until 10:30, and then after that, we go to our regular menu, which I think most people might know, hamburgers, and chicken sandwiches, salads, chilies. And that's it, we're also known for being a late-night alternative. Our dining rooms would close at 10 o'clock, and we stay open as late as the community wants us. We close no later than midnight, but if there's a need to stay open till 1 o'clock or later, and staffing permits, that's something that Wendy's is known for. That kinda covers operationally, and I'll turn it over to Dan, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have, either now or later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, good to see you all again. Dan Chanel with Dynamic Engineering, I am the site civil engineer, who prepared the plans on behalf of this applicant. So I'll be brief, I'm sure you all know the site very well. Existing Dunkin' Donuts site, which Wendy's is looking to take over. So as far as site improvements, we're looking at very minimal changes here. Drive-through is essentially gonna stay in the same exact location that it is today. Circulation stays the same, it'll be in a counterclockwise direction around the building. But we are making some modifications too, that drive-through to essentially help channelize that flow and make it flow even a little bit better. So today, the order point for the Dunkin' Donuts is essentially along the frontage of the building, the frontage of the site, essentially in the area that I'm highlighting right now. So now, under proposed conditions, that'll stay the same, but there was a existing, essentially existing landscape island that was in the center of that drive area, that was separating the parking area from the drive-through lane. But it made it very tight for the head-in parking spaces that exist along the frontage, to be able to back out when there was cars there. So a change that we're looking to make, rather than having 90-degree head-in parking spaces, we're gonna take those parking spaces, we're gonna angle them to be 60-degree parking spaces, and we're gonna remove that little landscape island that is separating the parking area from the drive-through lane. What that's gonna allow us to do is really help promote that one-way circulation around the site, so no one backs out when they leave to try to go the opposite flow of traffic. So you really force that counterclockwise circulation around the site, and it provides two full, essentially, lanes, one for the through-traffic and one for the drive-through. When we angle those parking spaces, we will lose seven parking spaces, which essentially creates a parking variance. However, I would say about two-thirds of Wendy's customers are now drive-through rather than going through the store. So we don't anticipate parking to be an issue, even though we are losing seven parking spaces. When we remove that little landscape island, obviously, we're increasing impervious surface coverage. However, when we angle- However, when we angle those parking spaces, we have some opportunity, um, at either end, which I'm highlighting right now, um, to essentially make up for what we lost. We actually result in a net gain of landscape area when we add those two little islands. So, uh, a- after we, oh, sorry. Additionally, in, in, in addition to those minor drive-through improvements, we're proposing two concrete pads, one at the pickup window that exists, as well as a two-order points. Um, and with this Wendy's, rather than having a single order point, we'll have two order points. This allows the employees to essentially take two orders at once, begin preparing two orders at once, um, and we'll still only have one pickup window. However, that processes the drive-through, uh, traffic a lot quicker. It allows us to begin making two, uh, orders at once and it really, um, uh, gets, uh, vehicles and customers through the drive-through lane quicker than with just one order station. Um, additionally, there's a need, uh, we're proposing to add a new freezer cooler to the rear of the building. It's a prefabricated, uh, essentially freezer that is placed on a concrete pad, uh, that will connect to the back of the restaurant, which you'll see in the architectural drawings in a moment, um, to essentially upgrade that, that system to support, uh, and, and propose, or, I'm sorry, support the operations of the facility. Uh, outside of that, really no other major changes to the site, no changes to lighting. Um, we are proposing additional landscaping. Uh, we'll fill in essentially the landscape islands along the frontage of the site, as well as, um, those, uh, parking spaces that front on, uh, Crompton Road there to help shield those lands, uh, headlights of vehicles and, uh, dress up the site a bit. Uh, so those are site improvements. Um, just wanted to, our architect isn't here tonight, this evening, but I'll briefly touch on the architecture as well. Uh, so the building itself will, the, the facades will, will remain. The existing branding for the Dunkin' Donuts would be removed. Uh, the building itself would be cleaned, uh, and then, uh, in large part painted. So, um, a lot of the brickwork that exists will be painted. However, we will be providing or proposing some, uh, Wendy's standard architectural elements. Uh, to the left-hand side of the sheet here, you see, um, this, uh, element where it's called the Wendy's blade. Essentially, it's a, um, a stucco type of finish, uh, which the Wendy's cameo logo is placed on top of, uh, which you'll see on all of the new Wendy's style buildings. Uh, the top of the building will be treated with, um, essentially, uh, a metal, uh, finish to, again, promote the Wendy's brand, add some color to the site. Uh, the patio area would be dressed up, uh, with some additional, uh, screening. Uh, there will be some outdoor seating on that elevated patio. Uh, one good benefit, uh, or, or a pretty cool feature that I think with these new Wendy's, uh, concepts is essentially, this area that I'm circling here now is a pickup window. Uh, so it allows customers to order ahead on their phone and rather than either going through the drive-through or going inside the store, once their order's ready, they just walk up to that window from their car or maybe they're, uh, shopping somewhere else in the center, uh, to go and be able to pick up their window, uh, just as another way to process orders versus going inside placing order or going through the drive-through. When we had the informational session, uh, one of the items that was requested was, uh, changing the color of the rooftop mechanical screening equipment to the roof. So originally it was essentially a metallic color, uh, to shield those HVAC units. Uh, the architect has taken an opportunity to essentially, uh, update that to, uh, match the rest of the color of the building, um, with the same type of materials that you'll see, uh, throughout the building itself to, to help shield that, uh, existing HVAC equipment. Uh, as far as signage, we're actually decreasing the amount of signage when compared to the Dunkin' Donuts. The Dunkin' Donuts has about, uh, 70 square feet of signage. I'm sorry, I think it might be more than that. Uh, but I'm fumbling through my numbers, but I, I do know that it is less, uh, uh, signage that is there today. So you'll see the Wendy's cameo, uh, logo on the blade, as well as the Wendy's, uh, wording along this elevation. That's essentially the elevation that faces the center, um, opposite of the drive-through pickup lane. Uh, on the other side, which faces the residence, there is no illuminated signage whatsoever on the, the building. There is just a, essentially painted, uh, shadow, um, uh, of the Wendy's cameo logo, but that's unlit and will just be painted on the, um, uh, the existing brick. Uh, the narrower frontages, so the, the frontage at the top is the frontage that faces Crompton Road. Again, you have this Wendy's blade element with a cameo sign and the Wendy's wording, um, and then your architecture, uh, theme matches, uh, what was on those other elevations as well. Uh, the rear elevation, which, uh, points to the rest of the center, no signage whatsoever. Um, this box in the center is that, is the freezer cooler that I mentioned before. It's that precast unit, uh, which will, um, be added to the building, which is the same portion that's back here again for the storage of, uh, the Wendy's buns, um, and other items for, for cooking. As far as, um, internal of the building, the, the building will be completely gutted, um, and renovated, uh, for Wendy's, uh, all high-tech, uh, equipment in the, uh, preparation area. And then the seating area would be in the front. We're looking at about 63 internal seats and 13, uh, exterior seats, uh, along that patio area, um, for a grand total of 76 seats and there will be, uh, some accessible seating options as well, uh, for handicap compliance. So unless I missed anything, or if you have any specific questions, uh, that essentially some of what we're doing here, but more than happy to address any questions or comments that you may have.
We've seen this before a couple of years.
I do have one question. Since you're, since you're angling those parking spots up front, do you really need to get rid of that island? Because it seems like that island would provide some, I won't say protection, but at least a buffer between the cars queuing up and the cars backing up into that same area.
It would provide a buffer, but we're only at, it's about 10 feet wide. So if you're backing out of these spaces, you're gonna hit that, um, that island. I'm actually not even sure how cars get out of those head-in spaces right now, because the head-in spaces, uh, same thing, you only have about 10 feet, uh, before you're backing out and most cars are longer than 10 feet. So it's, it's kind of a strange situation to begin with. Um, so by removing it, it's definitely gonna make the situation better and then you're gonna have a full 18 feet, which is standard for, uh, essentially a one-way drive-through with, driveway with, with angled, uh, parking spaces. So a lot of times you'll see the curb line that's 18 feet away or another row of parking that's 18 feet away when you have 60-degree angled places, uh, which is more than enough to allow a car to back out, um, without, you know, crossing into that 10-foot-wide drive-through lane.
You'd almost see, I'm, I'm looking at a, a Google map picture of the old drive-through and it almost seems like that drive-through is very wide. Would you be able to move the island? Again, it just seems like there'd be a, uh, something that could give somebody an indication before they hit the car, that they're, but that's in, you know, queuing in the, uh, drive-through. If their tires go up on a curb or...
Yeah, it's tough because it, I, I do, I mean, this is the, the aerial here, you can kinda see the cars queuing in the drive-through in that existing lane.
I'm looking at a street view.
That's the building here.
But, yeah, I, I understand the, the geometry is tough.
Yeah, it's tough because, oops, I'm... Because if we suck this existing curb line closer to the building, then this radius that makes this turn into the drive-through becomes very tight as well.
Right.
And you're gonna be in a situation where you might be clipping mirrors on the corner of the building and, and hitting the curb. So I honestly think we're, we're as, as tight as we can get with that circulation and with that 18-foot, I am confident that, you know, you're gonna have enough room to back out where you're not gonna hit vehicles.
Move it a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else from the board?
I'm looking at a note that was, uh, sent to us from one of the residents that lives, I believe, behind this project on Pine Grove Court. Uh, and she mentions a problem with trash and so on. I didn't see on any of the layout, any compactors or where you're going to be handling the trash.
Yep, absolutely. So we did discuss that, uh, with the applicant. The existing Dunkin', it's actually cut off from the page, but, uh, further to the south behind the building, there is an existing, uh, trash enclosure that the Dunkin', uh, currently uses or, or did use, um, and Wendy's will be utilizing that same, uh, enclosure. I'm sure operations would be more than happy to work with the board, um, to condition, you know, certain hours for trash pickups to make sure it's not, you know, real early in the morning or, or late at night. That would disturb the, the residents, uh, that are to the west of us.
Well, I believe it wasn't only that, uh, their, their concern was not being disturbed. Their concern was garbage surrounding the operation not being cared for.
Yep.
Right, we did get a copy of that about the garbage potentially, I guess now, that part of the current situation's been...
Oh, you gotta come up, sorry.
...go out into the woods, so we can certainly have operations address, you know, what our, what our plan is with respect to garbage disposal and recycling and how, you know, Wendy's takes that very seriously in terms of trash, so you wouldn't have anything similar to the current situation, but we can...
I can, I can just comment on our current procedure. So we have, uh, systems for a lot of aspects of our business and cleanliness and curb appeal is a big part of what we do. So we do lot maintenance in the morning. It varies based on scheduling and transportation, but that's done in the morning. Uh, we have systems where we're doing walkthroughs throughout the day, but our big push is what we call, uh, rush-ready. Let's try to get that just-open look. So our managers are doing lot tours constantly. We evaluate ourselves as evaluators, as owners, uh, we do mystery shops, uh, we have Wendy's corporate, look, all eyes are on this. It's important for folks to come to a restaurant and see it clean. Do folks litter? I, I don't know why, but they do, you know? And it's our job, we, we, we do our best to clean it up. Um, we do have the trash enclosures. They're, they're sized for pickups and typically three times a week. They're enclosed, the lids are on, uh, the contractors that we use will replace those units, what is it, every six months?
Every six months.
Every six months, there's maintenance done on it to make sure the lids are working properly. Obviously, there are health department codes as well to, to maintain your trash in an organized fashion. Uh, yes, some, sometimes people, uh, dump and we find cribs in there and mattresses and, and we have to manage that and we have to talk to, uh, our, our landlord and, and officials in town to try to combat that, if that's the type of issue that's been happening there. But, uh, we really do our best to, uh, to maintain our facilities and make sure that anything that's left that is Wendy's-related is picked up by our teams.
I think in the past...
Is that helpful and...
Yeah, I think in the past, it's, sorry.
No, thank you.
I think in the past, there's some of the applications that have come to us, there's been an issue between the residential area and the development with garbage, making sure that the screening is appropriate and maintained. I did go past your one in Elmsford. Very nice.
Thank you.
Looked very clean. But that type of thing is what they're concerned about.
I can understand.
Yeah.
It works both ways, right?
Right.
We don't, we don't want it blowing, uh, in the opposite direction either, so being a good neighbor is, uh, is important, obviously.
I would just suggest that the applicant put on the drawings what, what that enclosure is, how it's gonna be treated, if it's gonna be modified at all, because right now we, it's off the drawing.
It's out, it, yeah, it's just out of you, so...
So it should be included, so we know either it's acceptable or it's not.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
No.
Anything from the audience? Anyone? John Kinkart? No? John?
I don't really have, I just have the one question. The, the rooftop screening material, I, I assume is the same? You're just painting it to match the color of the horizontal treatment that you have on the facade, correct?
Um, yes, I'm looking for the actual schedule of the, where it's called out as the material. But it's essentially, it's a material called knot wood.
Oh, you're gonna use a knot wood up on, for the screening?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. Question answered.
Yeah, we might clarify now.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was called out on Warren's plans, but... It's not called, called out on his schedule.
That, that's fine.
We can clarify. I mean, the architect calls it, uh, cityscape horizontal rib panels.
Okay.
But as we go further, we can, uh, explain that.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the board, no comments from the audience? Do you guys have anything else to add?
Not at this time. Um, I just wanted to just briefly note, and I think we touched upon it before, that, um, we previously determined that there would be no need for this application to go to the zoning board because signage and the parking variance was something within the threshold of what this board could allow. So, um, other than going to Abaca to continue the discussions with respect to architecture, um, which we have next week, um, we would, you know, we welcome the discussion in terms of taking the next steps with this board.
Yeah, I think if no one's got an issue with it, we'll talk to Robin about getting a official public hearing set up. Unless there's any questions?
It's all minor questions from my perspective at this point.
So I would make sure we get all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. Past that, we'll work with Robin, get it on the...
We've got one meeting in October, right?
Yeah. No, this is...
October 3rd.
Two in October.
Someone stole my, uh...
One is one.
October 3rd or 12th?
Your book.
I have it here. 17.
Oh, really?
This was the month.
Okay.
Third in the, uh...
Yeah.
Seventeenth.
Okay.
All right, but in reference to the, uh, public informational hearing, do I have a motion to close?
Motion. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just work with Robin, get you on the public hearing, work with the Baca, work with John in the details and, uh, look forward to seeing some, uh, good stuff.
Great, will do. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, next on the work session portion of the meeting. Number seven, we have the Staples Plaza Battery Energy Storage System Expansion. This is a discussion of a special use permit.
Close our meeting first.
Oh.
Did we close it?
So...
Motion to close.
Is there a second? I'm missing a lot tonight. One of those weeks. And again, we'll move into the work session and the battery energy, energy storage system. How are you?
Good evening, uh, the board, distinguished board members. So nice to see you again.
See you again, too.
We are, uh, the years go by, you know? This is, uh, but, uh, very pleased to see you here again and so, um, my name is Mazir Deleli from IPP Solar. So we are, uh, we made some changes to the last iteration of drawings, uh, given your comments and so I'm here to explain the changes and address your questions. Any questions that, to start with, or, or how do you want me to proceed?
Do you wanna pull up, do you have a computer to pull up the drawings or...
Actually, I do have the, my computer, but, um...
Maybe Robin can...
I'm not sure, uh, how to actually do the connection, but, uh, Robin, you're able to put it on the screen, right? Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you very much, Robin. Okay, so if you recall, uh, from the last, uh, meeting, we had, uh, two units, two new, new units that we wanted to add on the back of the big building. And so based on your comments, we thought that, okay, why don't we just put them back together with the, uh, existing units in that same little corner? And we would put them back-to-back, so everything is just together and, uh, you know, it would be much simpler, simpler that way. This, uh, this layout seemed to, uh, be supported at the time, I think, by many of you, but, um, so, yeah, that's the, the proposed, the proposed, uh, design and, um...
So you're gonna concentrate everything...
Correct.
Near the original installation?
Correct. Correct.
Just gonna expand the fence and.
Yes.
You are, you're supplanting a couple of more parking spaces and that's all, right?
Correct. So essentially, yes, uh, we have, uh, on the southern portion, the old, uh, battery unit. And we would add those two new units that are, uh, now, the new versions are so much more efficient. They concentrate more power and, and so it's great. It's, uh, it will achieve more storage. And, uh, yeah, everything will just be in that, that corner.
Anybody have any concerns, issues? There's a letter about the training in there on the units from the PGR group. Any concerns on your end, John?
No, I, 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 I'm happy to see it where it is. Uh, you know, there, I think there was some, some safety concerns with the location of the others.
Mm-hmm.
Whether real or, or not, but we did go through, this was the first one that we did here. We did go through a lot of discussion about the safety in emergency situations. And I think this makes it, the situation better in any way that you can imagine. So I think really it's a matter of modifying that original emergency plan that you produced as part of the original to include this, uh, you know, swap out the layouts and so on and so forth and add anything else uh, that is particular to these new types of units. And I think, I think it's a much easier situation for us to deal with.
Yes, you're right, John, because, uh, the fire department has already been trained and, uh, they already have a good idea that, you know, it's there. So that, that's certainly the merit of this installation, but certainly happy to get your comments.
Any concerns from anybody?
No.
No.
Alright, so what's next up here?
We do pub, a hearing on it? We, we haven't. I think it's a matter of, uh, enhancing the drawings to get them.
Yep.
Close to a constructible set.
Sure.
For approval, uh, including the emergency plan to be updated.
Sure.
And then we get to a resolution stage.
Sounds good. I will, uh, work in that direction together with our friends at JMC to make sure that, uh, we are not missing anything. And we will submit, I don't know if we'll be able to submit it for the next meeting. We'll try, if not, the following one. I, I think it's probably safe to put it for the following one.
Okay.
Okay.
If it's okay with you.
See you in October.
Yeah, we'll have to put on some, some jackets then. Very good. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you very much.
Alright, next is the Dorchester Glen subdivision, locations 163 Maxwell Drive.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Joe.
She just let me in.
Is that the new computer?
Yeah, but she still let me in. So last time, I was before you on this. Excuse me, we had a public hearing, which was closed. And, um, as part of the presentation, we presented this option, which was, which was our preferred option, um, which is based on the cluster approval that was granted to you by the, um, the flexibility, sorry, the flexibility approval that was granted to you by the town board. And we were asked to do a, an alternative, uh, pull, manipulating the property lines a little more and pulling the buildings a little, little further up the hill to, to, um, reduce the disturbance, which is this plan here. We did an overlay, and let me just zoom in a little closer for you on that, which shows the difference between two plans. Um, so the, um, orange would be the alternative, pulling everything up the hill. From, from my opinion and, um, the applicant's opinion, the preference is to have a little bit, uh, more flexibility in the sense of pushing the, the, the homes, keeping them a little further back, that'll, you know, it opens up the plan a little more. You don't have that dense feeling. Um, even though this is half acre zone, these are large lots. And I think we should take advantage of the fact that they're larger lots and not, not cram the houses, um, side by side if we can avoid it. Whatever the board prefers is fine, but that's, um, that's the position that, that, you know, we're taking. We prefer the original alternative with the houses a little further back. So, you know, we're hoping that, um, we can ask the board to direct, um, a resolution to be prepared. But I think we need to decide first which alternative you prefer, so it can be based on that.
The applicant thinks this is a better, better for him?
With the houses further back.
Yeah.
Just, again, you know, it's, opens up the lot, the lot, they're, they're not side, so much side by side.
Yeah, definitely can see that.
It's a little, it's a little more spread out.
Yes. Well, I don't know about everybody else, but I would, I would go for this. I think it's a much better look.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's opened up and it looks great.
Yeah, I think, I think given the size of the lots.
I agree.
Yeah.
Leverage the space. I mean, it's to the benefit of the future homeowners, really.
Absolutely. Take into consideration putting in pools and everything else.
Yeah, so this is, this is the, the preferred alternative to go with this. Any concerns or issues, John?
Well, we suggested to look at it, you know, to reduce the environmental impact for one. I think in some, one or two of the lots, it made the backyard maybe a little bit easier to, or a nicer backyard potentially. Uh, I, I don't know that it looks cramped more or less cramped from one to the other. So, you know, either one is not that far afield from one another in terms of its change and therefore possibly its impact, so.
What's the issue? Is the issue grading?
No, the issue is when you, when you're doing flexibility or clustering of flexibility, you're doing it to preserve certain environmental features or values and so, so forth. So once we were doing the flexibility, it seemed reasonable to try to improve that situation. So it'll be less removal of trees, less grading, less disturbance, things like that.
I, I, I will say that, um, for this, this slot here, the one furthest to the south, I would agree with the modification of the house location there. You know, as John said, it creates a little nicer of a backyard for that house. And I like the orientation a little better. What I don't like is the spacing here and I don't, in order to get this driveway to work to, because of the grade and, and we've got this kind of little contorted driveway that, um, sort of bothers me as well as, you know, this one here, it gets a little crazy here. But, um, again, um, we, we're, we prefer the other plan. This is not a, you know, a showstopper to go with this, but, but certainly the other plan is, is, is what we'd like to go with.
Joe, to your point, does it have to be one or the other? Can't you take the best of both and?
Yeah, oh, I, absolutely.
Do that.
Absolutely.
Maybe we should talk, we could keep that driveway if they want to shorten the driveways on the first lot.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a given. We're gonna make this change here on the first lot when you come in. I'm just gonna flip the driveway to the other side, so that's gonna be a reduction of disturbance. Um, you know, like, so on this lot here, this area is all lawn area anyway, as, as it exists, it's all open. So we're, we're not really creating any additional disturbance of, of natural area in, in here. So the only one where we're, we're really getting into, um, you know, disturbance of more trees and whatnot would be this one. I, I don't mind this location, other than, than the driveway for me is a little torturous. I don't, I don't, I don't care for the driveway, but that's the only way we can get it to work grade wise. You know, trying to work with the grades there.
So you're thinking the ones on the bottom, you'd go for the orange outlines?
Uh, yeah, these, these two, I would, I would go with the orange outline. I, I don't, you know, I don't think that there's a, a significant amount of additional disturbance if we leave this plan as it is. And we're, we're talking about this, this area here would be really the additional disturbance associated with this, with this house. As I said, this one, this is all, this is all open lawn area as it exists now anyway. So we're not, we're not taking out any natural vegetation there.
I have no problem with leaving the orange and the up till.
I have no problem at all.
Joe, did the, did the modification result in any change in elevation of the proposed houses?
Yeah, of course, because, you know, we're, we're, we're working up by pulling the houses forward. We're going more into the slope or up the grade.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
So, um, you know, we, we, we tried to position the, the original ones. It's not really, um, very clear here, but, um.
Was the, the elevation change significant, or?
Uh, yes, I mean, you, you're, you're probably talking about, like, for example, this, this, this one here. Um, this contour going through the center of the house is 540. Um, and, yeah, I guess this one would be roughly the same elevation. Um, this one here would be maybe eight feet higher in elevation. But it's, but, but it's, you know, it's working with the grade. So it's not like it's gonna be sticking out of the ground eight feet higher, it's just.
I mean, the impact on excavation and grading and so forth.
Yeah, I don't, I, I really don't think it's, it's, it's really that much more. And at the end of the day, I, I think it's a, the outcome is better, you know, to, to have it, um, with the houses pushed back a little bit. That's, that, that's all.
Joe, would the applicant consider, um, combining two driveways to eliminate one?
Yeah, that's, yeah, something we talked about, but we're really not interested in, in doing that.
I don't think we would like that either.
I wouldn't like that. That's a nightmare.
You shovel it tonight, I'll shovel it tomorrow.
It creates a lot of litigation.
That just.
Then we'll figure out what tomorrow is.
That's where your neighbor comes out and with a shotgun.
No, it's not, not easy.
No way.
Anyway.
So, so you'll leave the two with the orange and the back two will, will shift? That sounds like a plan?
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I, um, uh, we, we definitely want to make this change. This change is, uh, very agreeable. These two, we'd like to leave the houses pushed a little back for.
Okay.
Alright.
Watch for us.
Okay. Alright.
Alright.
So the question is, can we get a resolution?
A resolution.
For the next meeting?
Alright, so just work on with, uh, John and Robin.
Where are you with, you know, like, trees and stuff like that?
Yeah, we've, we're waiting on a tree survey.
Yeah, that's in process. We should ask.
Yep. Um, we're waiting on, uh, uh, our, uh, testing with the DDP. That, that's, that's been pa, you know, painstaking.
You gotta do a SWIP and so forth?
Yeah.
For them?
Double the details.
Yep. So, anyway, okay. Alright, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
You too.
Same here.
Okay, next week, a guiding eyes for the blind. This is a discussion of a proposed fence, locations 611 Granite Springs Road. How are you?
Hi, good evening. Chris Raffielli with Studio Architecture. I'm sorry, I underestimated the tech savvy of this board and I didn't bring, bring anything to show on the screen. So I don't know, Robin, do you have a plan? If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Did anybody go and see the fence? I did.
I did, I did.
I did too.
You need the heavier string, doesn't it?
Yeah, right.
It was the dogs.
Far away. Hey, Joe. I'm so very sorry to hear about, uh, really. Yeah. Never easy.
Have we discussed this fence?
I don't know, what, uh, what are we gonna do?
Oh, I guess one pulls up. So you're looking to, why don't you tell us about the operator and?
Yeah. So Guiding Eyes for the Blind has the campus there on Granite Springs. They've identified a need to extend the fence to basically enclose the property, uh, for the safety of the dogs, essentially. Uh, so right now on the west side of the property, there's a substantial fence along, almost all of the property line from what would almost be the front of the existing building all the way to the back corner of the property. Uh, what they'd like to do is enclose the entire property. The need that they have found is that when they run a drill or they have to evacuate the kennel back there, um, they've got all of their dogs out in the yard. And while they're trained and under control, it's just a safety thing to try and keep them contained to the property. Uh, so the way that the fence would work is, uh, there'd be a gate on the two entries from Granite Springs. One works with a, with a card and an intercom. The other one will work on a, a weight pad to, to exit. They'd like to put a white aluminum fence across the front at four feet. I think maybe you've seen, seen the mark out for that. Then down along the left side of the property, which is the east side, um, they're kind of back and forth about what fence to put there. Whether cyclone fence or maybe a white vinyl fence. And that would continue around the back of the property to meet the white vinyl that's already existing.
Do we have any issues with the property at all, or? This is a pretty.
Black aluminum.
Yeah.
Uh, no, not really. You know, there's some little things occasionally that we're asked to get involved in, but there hasn't been any serious problems with the property.
Okay. So maintenance is all the agreement's part of the original?
Yeah.
Is there no fence now?
No fence.
There's no fence.
And what, and what, how did they identify this issue? That they, the need for the fence?
Oh, from, from drills since they've reactivated from COVID. They've run a series of fire drills and evacuation plan kind of things, and that's when the need showed up.
Sounds like the dogs went for a run.
Yeah, right.
So the fence in the front will be the aluminum, it's shown as the Ascot, right?
Right.
And then the one underneath it is basically the same thing, cantilever, Ascot, that's the gate.
Right.
And then around the sides and back, you'll do cyclone fence, you know, chain link or something.
Yeah, or recently they considered white vinyl, which matches the, the fence that's already there on the other side of the property.
Yeah.
Lot of fence.
Yes.
Let's see what it is.
I don't see any bubbles, do you?
No.
I mean, it's, it gotta be necessary, you wanna keep the dogs in.
Yeah, aesthetically, it's gonna be. I mean, right now, it looks like a beautiful park.
Yes.
Maintained beautifully and all. You gotta put a white vinyl fence across the entire front there. Aesthetically, it's not.
Well, it's only four feet high.
Yeah, well, the front, the front fence will be a four foot high aluminum fence.
Yeah.
A picketed kind of look.
That sounds pretty.
Yeah.
I don't have no problem.
Any issues?
No issues.
I don't think so. It's all good, right?
The issue that we brought it, that we cared about was what was going on in the front. I think there was maybe chain link considered at one point.
There was, yes, mhm.
So.
And that's changed.
Okay.
So I, I think the, the aluminum with the detail here, which is very simple, but nonetheless much different than cyclone fence, and I think it is much, much nicer and fits with, essentially what's there, so.
Okay. Jim, any issues?
Nothing from me.
Alright, so what's the next up here?
I think this is just a issuance of a memo, really, to the building department to issue the permit for the actual construction. I think this is just a issuance of a memo, really, to the building department to issue the permit for the actual construction. Which will be memorialized, you know, to, that it's there for, um, in the record.
Okay. Alright, so we'll get a memo out.
Fantastic. Thanks, have a good night.
Alright, next on the agenda is a town board referral. This is the Gulf Gas Station, locations three, four, five, one, Crom Pound Road.
Take care.
See you guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Stephen Tyree with Environmental Contracting. With the fueling contractor, uh, for the proposed work at the, uh, at the Gulf Service Station. We've completed all of our filings at this point in time. We met with the Conservation Board, we met with, uh, the BACA Board. And we're here before you folks. You had one concern that you had asked about, and that was to look into the status of any violations at the site. We've done our search. There were no open violations, uh, at the site. I'm happy to report. The, uh, I'm represent- representing seven eleven on this. There's no work being done at the building at this point in time. There's no seven eleven logos, uh, that were bought up at some of the other meetings. What we're really hoping to get done is starting in October to replace the underground storage tanks of there. The tanks are old, the tanks are over thirty years, they need to come out of the ground. Everything's been submitted, uh, to replace the two tank, uh, to replace it with two underground double wall storage tanks. Including all of the product piping, all of the vent piping, and all of that being double wall too, to alleviate any, any, any problems down the road. We're, uh, we'll be putting on new, uh, tank top sumps as requested by D E C. As well as on, under the dispensers that are gonna be installed at the site. The, uh, the work's ready, the plans have all been submitted. The plan is to get in there, put ensuring, get those, get those old tanks out, put new tanks in. There will, there is, uh, uh, some contamination at the site. All the soil will be removed and probably disposed of to a recycling facility. I believe it's gonna be going up to a facility up in Fort Edwards, uh, a reclamation facility. Uh, any groundwater that's on site, that's gonna need to be, uh, bummed, will be treated or trucked off the site. Pretty standard job. Everything's in the, everything's in the concrete and asphalt area that's on the site. Uh, and in addition, they're gonna have the, uh, dispensers and the canopy. Uh, all those pictures and submittals have been, have been, uh, given to, uh, the two previous boards and, and to yourselves.
John, do we have a site plan for this?
Uh, there are. There are some things that we've received in the past. We can bring them forth for you. Um, I don't know that there is an officially approved site plan. Um, but there is some stuff that exists. I think the, some of the violations, the ongoing things were with, um, the U-Haul trucks and so forth.
Yeah, the story.
That was a discussion. Uh, also, there was always discussion, mostly at this board, about the rear of the property. Uh, the fence, the type of fence, the maintenance of the fence, any landscaping, you know, debris and garbage and stuff like that. I, I'll just make one note that the, you're going to change out the sign, the standalone sign?
Right now, the sign was just being upgraded. There is an application going in in two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four, probably. Uh, for the building work to upgrade the building. And at that point in time.
Right, so I, you know, it, the site will top out at twenty feet, which is four feet higher than what the standard is. But if they are going to do a site plan, I assume with seven eleven. A lot of that stuff you can capture at that time. You know, depending on what you want to advise the town board on, uh, certainly getting the tanks done is always a high priority.
I, I understand that, but I think the last time the applicant was here, and I don't know if you're the same applicant.
Not one of the engineers.
So we had a lot of issues with the site. I think we all went by individually, did a site visit. You know, without a site plan, I think there, if this vehicles, I mean, all over the site. It, it's just, you know, it seems very. Crowded and chaotic.
So is this a seven eleven going into a Gulf station or is it becoming a seven eleven?
It will be coming a seven ele- eleven eventually. Seven eleven's coming in to take over the fueling piece of it first.
What about the service bays?
It, no, they're not gonna have anything to do with the buildings. They're gonna be there eventually.
That's where the, I mean, there's too many cars.
Oh, it's, it, you're, you're at, you know, a, a gateway to that community back there. And, you know. I'm gonna say this politely without getting myself in trouble. I mean, I, we really want people to be good neighbors. And, you know, I, I think in this case, maybe that's not the case. Uh, I think we really need to take a look at the site and make sure it's kinda in compliance with everything else we have along that, that area.
Understand, and they know when they take over the building and they take over the yard and the thing, they're gonna, they're gonna do a conversion on it and they'll take.
And what happens if they do all this work and then that doesn't happen?
They, 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 they're not interested in the site. They were, they, 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 you know, they know they have to replace the fueling first. And then they're gonna have to do an application over the next two years to do the building.
You got.
Break it up.
Yeah, you got a, a whole canopy that's there. You know, that would be part of one site plan approval, right?
Yeah, you can make it as one part, uh, as part of one site plan. But you can do, I, I think you can do this project, which is replacing the tanks because there's contamination. And everyone's going to double wall tanks now. And, and do the canopy. Uh, first, that, that's one way to look at it. I mean, you can limit this approval to that work.
The last time they were here, how many years ago was that?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So we've got three years?
We, we had, we visited this issue on the Conservation Board a number of years ago. And one of the big issues that came up is just to the west of this site is Hunter Brook. Where it crosses underneath, uh, thirty-five. And with all the cars that were encroaching off of the assigned area. There was a problem even with D E P with, with this being an issue. And if we don't put in something to regulate that at this point, we're gonna revisit, revisit this.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I just think this, this site needs.
A lot of work. The company agrees with that a hundred percent. They just have to take it in stages.
I'll take that old adage, we're from Missouri, so you gotta show us. You know, I, I really am not happy chopping this up into two pieces. Cause I think they could do one piece, put the canopy in, which is a tremendous, uh, piece of the project and then. You know. Disappear. Completely, but I think it should be one application.
What about fencing the whole project?
I think we gotta look. Yeah, right. Well, I think that would be, and Jim, tell me if we're stepping over bounds here, but.
We can put anything we want to memo back to them.
Ultimately up to the town board whether it's what's before them or whether to ask for something more. There is some urgency to doing the tanks and I think.
Alright, I, I think the tank should be done. Absolutely.
But I think we should make our feelings on the splitting this project up known to the town board and then that's all we can do.
So you could do the tanks, which are underground, that doesn't mandate you do the canopy.
But you could, it would be preferable to get one site plan showing everything. But I would give them the approval first for the tanks because that is, that's an urgency.
I understand, but the tanks don't have to include the canopy or the signage. And that's just. Yeah, I think that the, the tanks could be issued directly from the, probably the building that inspected.
Yeah, the, the issue with the canopy though is that you're gonna have, you're gonna have that site opened up. You're gonna have, you know, new tanks, you gotta pull out the old tanks, new tanks, new pads. And a lot of that gets just excavated and then filled back with, you know, concrete, um, gravel and so forth. So that's the time really to do the canopy, in particular the foundation.
Process of construction, but the last time they weren't here for the tanks, they were just here for the site.
That's right.
And I think everybody had input and maybe the input wasn't received and disappeared. And from that time, this site has become more intense. So.
Is the mechanic shop gonna be closed?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna have to be. There's lot, there's, there's large tank, there's a large shoring job, larger de-watering job, treatment of the groundwater with carbon filtrations and filter bags and frac tanks. There's no need to have cars there anymore.
Yeah, I understand that. We're, we're talking after the fact. Once the station is back up and running and the tanks are installed. Now the cars are gonna come back.
Hopefully seven eleven is coming in with the mechanics, alright? This is in, this is in two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four. They'll be submitting the application to do further work. And I'm sure they'll comply with whatever is requested.
But ultimately, the intention is to have the service bays as a part of the site? Or do they go away?
I think it's gonna be completely gone.
So it's not gonna be a cocoa farm?
It's gonna be a store. It's not gonna be.
It's not gonna be like what you see in trouble. Actually, it's, you're still gonna have the issue of the service bays and what comes with that.
No, he said the service base.
No, the service base won't be there. It'll be similar to the mobile up the road right. Yeah, I'm sorry if I confused.
So when do they?
You're a few years out. They, they say the file, they say the filing in the spring.
Is there a reason they're holding off filing?
They didn't know which way they were going with it. These tanks, they pushed the D E C as far as they could push and they just, it, it has to be done at this point in time. Tanks are on their, uh, thirty-fourth year. They've been monitoring the site, they've been treating the site, but it's still, the soil has to get out of there.
And will the seven eleven expand into the area where the bays are?
I, I, oh, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not certain. It's not gonna affect anything with, with the fueling lines, the product lines, all the tanks. The tanks that go in, all the sumps or anything. Certainly free and clear of that.
No, but let's be clear that, uh, seven eleven will occupy the building at some point. That's the plan right now. That will include the area that is the service base.
Correct.
So it'll be a seven eleven with a gas station?
With a fueling center, yes, correct.
Is there an active spill on this property?
There is. There is, it's being monitored.
You have a spill number, you gotta close that out. Regardless of what we do.
Absolutely.
Again, we don't have to include the canopy or the.
They could put the footings into the canopy. And, and then the installation of the canopy can follow after our approval of the site. So they can do that work so that they don't have to reopen the site.
Why don't we go that far? At least recommend that the town board. Does that on a limited basis?
That sounds good. And I would ask that the town board members, if they could, take a ride by, do a site visit out there.
Oh, I know the site. Front and back.
I see it every day.
We didn't bring any pictures for that purpose, but we certainly understand it.
Yeah, I did. It, it needs some help.
Alright, so we'll get that letter?
We'll draft something for you to look at.
Alright.
Okay.
Just a detailed.
Very much, thank you very much.
One of the, one of the letters here refers to the site as being in Peekskill. Thirty-four fifty-one Crom Pound Road, Peekskill.
Yeah, it may have a Peekskill, a mailing address.
We don't have jurisdiction.
No, it says Ray, Town of Yorktown Review, seven eleven store, thirty-four fifty-one Crom Pound Road.
There's Cortlandt Manor too, but yeah, I see them.
Cortland doesn't start till a little further down, right?
Yeah, but it may just be the mailing address, cause Grandma's has, uh, Peekskill address also.
One or five, six, seven is.
All the plans haven't been submitted, certainly for Yorktown.
I'm just saying the correspondence has been correct, that's all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Good night. Alright, next we have another town board referral. This is the Volta Charging Stations at the Jefferson Valley Mall, location six fifty Lee Boulevard.
Can't get rid of it that easy.
How are you?
Do well, have yourself. Are you able to pull up, um, thank you? And then if you wanna start on C zero dash zero two, just to show the charging station, I know the board is very familiar at this point. Good evening, um, my name is Trent Seth, I'm a site civil engineer at Kimley Horn. Um, I'm here to have the applicant involved at charging, uh, present this proposal at the Jefferson Valley Mall. Um, it's a proposal for four charging stations, um, level twos. Um, this is a similar installation at the Staples Plaza that we talked about last month and have received approval for. Um, just, I'm, we're just doing four at this site, um, to kinda give an overview of the stations again. Um, level two takes about eight hours to charge for a full tank. The, uh, the charging stations themselves do include digital displays on them that show advertisements, which subsidizes charging, um, for the customer. The displays themselves, advertisements, they cycle every eight seconds, no flashing, instantaneous change. You know, no sound associated with no flashing, um, and this has, you know, been approved by Texas, I mean, by the town board already. Um, if you wanna go ahead and go to the overall site plan, look at their installation here. Um, we're looking at the center of the mall right here. We have two stations proposed at the top side and then two on the south side. Um, the stations itself will sit on approximately four by four pad. Conduit will run from the building itself, so it will be existing power, no new utility service or anything of the likes. Um, it'll utilize directional boring to run the conduit, trenchless technology, be less invasive to the site. Um, if we wanna move more into the enlarged view here. So this is on the southern side here, um, the charging stations themselves are the little squares there. Um, so we're using existing charging station, or existing parking stalls. And we're looking to utilize this existing, um, striped island here, um, already at the site, um, to feed those two stations there on the southern side. And if we go to the next slide.
Can I ask you a question? Striped island. Worried about these things getting hit?
Um, we'll have baller protection on all four sides. They haven't, you know, Volta's been doing this for a couple of years now, um, I'd say around five. And we haven't heard of any main issues of people running into them, um, or causing incidents. Um, you know, they're pretty clearly defined and with the baller protection, um, hasn't been any issues for them. So that installation's on the southern side. This is on the northern side of the site, um, similar to like the Staples Plaza's installation. These will be in landscaped islands here, so they'll have additional protection as well, um, but they'll serve to existing stalls similar to the southern side.
Back to the prior one, would there be any issue with curbing that and creating a, a landscape island around that, getting rid of the asphalt? You're gonna be digging the whole thing up anyway, right?
Traditionally, we don't do that, just, we like to keep it as existing as possible, um, such as avoid, you know, additional work and scope. So we would like to avoid that. And we've done installations like this all over where it's on grade there in existing striped islands with the ballards surrounding them. And it hasn't been an issue.
How do they get cleared during the winter?
Excuse me, sorry?
Snowfall.
Yeah, so they just have to be more careful around them. They will like, you know, the snow will kinda dig up around them, um, but the site will have to, you know, manage that.
I gotta be honest, I'd rather see that striped island more defined with a curb.
No, I think it's in a vulnerable position. I, I, I happen to agree with that very much so. You know, when you look at it in the other position, it is already going in an island and is, you know, in a head-on situation. And it's really not as, as vulnerable to somebody, you know, a traveler going through on the roadway as these are. These are really right on top of it.
Understood, um, if we were to move the stations more to the center of the island there, would that alleviate any concerns there? Cause we can certainly move them more towards the center, so they're not on the edges possibly.
I, I think, I, I think we, we've seen these products before at the Staples. We've been through, we've gone through the, the, uh, the whole thing about how they work and the, the striping on the lot. I think in this area in particular, you know, bar it's a sea of asphalt. I think this is an opportunity to improve that little area, also make these units safer. I have to tell you, I travel through there a lot. Also, people park on those striped areas when there's no parking, even though there is security. So I'm just one member of the board, but I'd rather see that island improved, curbed. Uh, these things on, you know, concrete pads like you have in.
There's a weakness in the design. The leftmost. Structure is right at the edge of the traveled portion of the roadway and there's nothing in between it. And, and that, uh, piece of equipment. I mean, if you move the whole thing down, one parking space into the row parking. Then you can adequately shield it by taking that other space that you would have parked in and, and using that instead. So that removes it from the edge of the traveled portion and, uh, I think addresses some of these concerns.
Cause that'll get. No question that'll get hit. There's nowhere to put the ballad unless you put it out in the road.
There's no place to put it.
If we were to move them more towards the center, um, you know, they would be fully encapsulated. And that is the proposal here. I mean, these foundations, I will admit, are large. If we were to move them more towards the center, um, you know, they would be fully encapsulated, and that is the proposal here, I mean, these foundations, I will admit, are larger than what we would construct, we, these, these plans do need to be modified slightly, these foundations we're showing here are by five by five, the ones we do now are closer to three and a half by three and a half, so it doesn't encapsulate into the drive aisle there. But I agree, you know, at the ends, you know, there might be, you know, sort of, hit, you know, a hazard, I think if, you know, move towards the center there, full ballers all around there, it's gonna be fully encapsulated within the striped island, and there's gonna be, you know, depth between the drive aisle and striped island. Certainly we will, like, you know.
I, I gotta be honest with you, I'd rather see a curbed island. You get rid of that asphalt, you're gonna be digging the whole area up, I knew you guys, each time you talk about these projects, you directional bore, but you're still gonna have to dig for these things. I think it's an opportunity to not only improve the look of these units, but to improve the safety and the functionality of that road. I know there was a time they were talking, the town was talking about taking over that road, I think that's passed.
Yeah, different, different part of it, but yeah.
Yeah.
It was the outside.
Outside the loop, but I, I, I think that needs to be, and again, I'm just one person, but I think that would improve it very much.
You're pouring, you're putting them on concrete pads, is that right?
That's correct.
So you are pouring some concrete?
Correct.
So if you move them more towards the center and did a little bit larger pad that's raised.
Yeah.
Not necessarily curb, but a raised pad that is kind of an integral curb, which simplifies the construction and the cost, would that be something?
It was something we'd have to look at, um, you know, construction wise and design wise, obviously, but certainly something we can look at, yes.
This, this way you can have a, you know, a raised portion that's, would act just like a curb, would be an integral curb to it. And the, the units would go towards the middle where the front of the cars would be. Maybe you could, th- th- then it'd be further from the roadway.
So this also is a town board referral because they have site plan approval over the site, um.
Yep.
Uh, mall. So I think we need to get a memo back to them expressing these concerns.
Are they positioned where they are right now because you're assuming people are gonna pull in headfirst? And the charging port is at the rear of the car? Is that?
Uh, Volt's preference is either at the, the end of the stalls or at the front, um, their main, their first preference is that they're at the end here, um, so if you're.
Because they go pull head in.
Yeah, pull head in, or if you're charged on the left side, you'd have to back in, it just all is a preference on your type of car, so the locations at the front, at the end of the stalls covers both situations where there's not a situation where the core doesn't reach, whether you pull in or back in.
So is the placement of this partially due to the advertising portion of it?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I think you just gotta, I think it's gotta be an island. It just protects it, it's in a bad area. But we're gonna number to the board to see how they respond.
I think the concern also is that whoever's using that station is gonna be standing out there next to traffic whizzing by. So the curb is one thing, but somebody's gonna be standing there. So the fact that you could move it further into the aisle of the parking spaces would make me happier, cause then you've got another car between you and that traffic going both ways. So whether there's a curb there or not, less important to me, the location is.
I would move it in like you said.
That's what I'm saying, move it in, let, let a car be between you and that traffic and then have an inner parking space be where you locate your unit.
You can put something in the memo? Alright.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
IBM. Okay, next we don't have a town board referral, it's IBM Battery Storage and EV Charging Stations. This is a discussion of a site plan and special permit, locations one one zero one Kitchwan Road.
Chargers.
Does the town board have control over the, the Loop Road at the mall?
No, it's private. They were, that was talked about.
It was supposed to, would never happen.
I just did not, cause there's, there's stop signs that are completely overgrown and people whizzing through, the one that comes in from Jefferson Village?
I think the building inspector did.
No.
Okay. Think, right, property maintenance.
Right, perfect, alright.
Really?
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Okay.
Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff, I'm here on behalf of Power Flex and IBM to discuss our proposed add-on to the PV project you guys approved, wanna say a year and a half ago is when I started presenting that. Um, currently under construction, this is an add-on battery and, um, EV project. So we're excited to introduce the project to you guys, uh, it's a one megawatt four-hour battery, uh, and eighty level two and five level three, also known as DC fast chargers that will be, uh, integrated into the project. Uh, we're excited about this project for a variety of reasons, we think, you know, this is a great opportunity to introduce these two aspects, uh, you know, very efficiently during the construction of the solar canopy, which is currently underway, uh, that's actually a picture of the current progress in the top right, so the steel is for the most part erected, uh, canopies are up and modules are being installed on top. Uh, so, you know, at this point, we're gonna be, or we would integrate the other aspects into that construction, it would be a lot easier, less site disturbance, uh, and obviously preferable to IBM to do this way. Um, in addition, the battery specifically would really help to increase local grid resiliency. This site specifically is on a, or is in a, uh, LS RV network zone, which is ConEd's way of designating specific networks as, um, you know, preferable for additional, um, you know, solar resource or other, um, uh, generating resources, a locational service reduction value zone, meaning they, they need additional production there, uh, so this is really an ideal location from ConEd's perspective to do this battery project specifically. Uh, the EV charging obviously would be a great benefit to IBM employees, it is intended for employee use, they don't, you know, have a ton of visitors, but this is gonna be located, uh, really, I can show you guys from an aerial perspective, but in the auxiliary lot behind the facility, not in the visitor lot in the front. Also, this is just a great opportunity to, to future-proof this site, so eighty EV chargers from a level two perspective is, is a ton of chargers, five DC fast chargers is, is a good amount as well, but we'll lay down additional conduit in order to future-proof, uh, to install additional EV chargers in the future. So in terms of progress, kind of where we are with the, I, I mentioned we're, uh, constructing the, the PV project currently, but in terms of the, uh, add-on projects, we do have interconnection approval from ConEdison for both the battery and the, um, EV chargers. We've done surveying for both projects, so we've done a GPR, ground penetrating radar survey, uh, in the area of concern, as well as an electrical survey. And we do actually have all the associated incentives from ConEdison, New York State already, uh, secured, those that are available, uh, at least currently. Uh, a sound study was completed for the battery, uh, the battery system, so there, there, you know, as far as the, the study is concerned, there'll be no impact to the points of interest and uh, at the residential property line, which is denoted in the diagram to the right, the sound level won't exceed ten decibels, uh, at any point there, so that's the yellow line in the bottom right hand corner. And that's really what we've worked on to this point. And then I just have the site plans to go through, I have, I don't know if you guys have them in front of you, but I have, actually, I can pull up a PDF that's a little better. So this is the battery system. Above is the, um, main lot where we have the solar project, this is the auxiliary lot, uh, down below, and the battery will be installed. You can see my cursor, kind of in this area down here, so this larger rectangle will be the pad for the battery. There's this, so you can just blow this up a little bit too. Okay, so the larger rectangle here is the pad for the battery, the smaller rectangle is the associated, uh, AC gear and inverters that will be needed uh, for the battery, and then we also have the construction facilities as well, so, um, the, the washout area and the, the soil area will, will, will be, where we'll be storing soil, uh, as well as some construction entrance information up here, and we've also denoted, oops, uh, the fence that's required by the code, uh, around the facility down here. So that is the battery system. If I run back to the presentation. Have a similar site plan. Did I do it? No. Here, so this is for the EVs, so the trenching is gonna be shared with the battery and actually the solar project for the EVs. So on the right-hand side here, if you can see my cursor, these will be the five DC fast chargers. Um, and then there's two additional rows, one here. And then a further row, excuse me, on the left side, which will have the level two chargers. Uh, those will all be located under the canopy on the piers, uh, that have been constructed, so they'll just be located on the steel, there's not gonna be additional pedestals required or any other, uh, site disturbance there. That, I think is, oh, and so this is an image of what our, um, preferred battery vendor at the moment's enclosures look like, this is obviously much larger than our system here, uh, but the dimensions of our proposed, um, pad are about twenty by forty by nine, and that includes the clearance required, uh, on all sides of the battery system.
And what are the size of those individual units?
Those are much larger, so I think we're gonna need about, if you can kind of visualize each individual, um, you know, cube here, we're gonna need about three of those cubes. So this is, this is a utility scale project, this is showing here, but just for reference of what, I mean, in my opinion, they're fairly attractive looking batteries. Although I'm biased, of course. But that, I think, is really the information I prepared, um, you know, IBM is eager to, to get going, actually specifically for the EV portion, they've secured uh, funding from their corporate, um, you know, actually nationally, their, their CEO actually gave up uh, his funding for his EV spot at the site he resides at to do this project, so he's, he's eager to see this one get done, uh, and that funding's supposed to be spent in twenty twenty-two. So, anything we can do to expedite specifically the EV portion of the project, um, would be great, uh, but obviously eager to, to move everything ahead, so that's what I prepared, if you guys have any questions, I can help answer.
I don't think it's gonna bother anybody.
I don't think there's no bother.
Does it require any changes footprint-wise to the original, uh, setup for the cut canopies?
No, so this is actually, I'm just gonna pull up just the, I was pulling up the, the aerial before just to be able to show you guys what it looks like. To provide some more reference, so this is the site from above. The initial canopy that, that's under construction currently is in this main lot here, the, the larger lot. Um, our, our, you know, proposed, uh, battery is, is right down here.
And that would be the only addition to the site?
Yeah, correct, and the EV chargers are going right on the piers, and really this whole project was somewhat envisioned this way initially, it just wasn't economically viable at the point when we, um, you know, proposed it to the board a couple of years back, so everything's kind of been engineered with the possibility of this add-on along the way, so it'll all kind of seamlessly, uh, work, really.
So are the EV chargers dependent upon the best system?
So that's a good question, the EV chargers are independently interconnected, interconnected into ConEd, we have a separate transformer already approved by ConEd, um, out uh, closer to, uh, the road, uh, and a separate transformer also for the battery, the battery and the EV, uh, the battery and the solar project will interplay. Uh, the EV project is entirely independent and will be, uh, associated with IBM's current, uh, energy infrastructure, their, their current service.
Yeah.
What are we doing now?
Well, I, I think you can, I think you can let the EV charger go by, by resolution.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, it's, it's barely a site planning issue, right? Really is. Um, and it's, since it's not dependent on the battery, there's, you know, there's no, there's no secret issue, really. Um, so, and given some of the issues that we'll have with the battery, and don't, don't get nervous. You know, just the process issues, I think that the EV can, you can just do a resolution at your next meeting on October third and, and send them on their way with that, and then we can continue to process. That'd be great. The best system under the special permit, uh, procedure.
Okay.
Cause I, I, it looks as though there might be some tree removal down on the bottom.
Yeah, just, I think two or three trees need to come out to, to accommodate, I think it's in your, your ordinance, the, the clearance from trees. So there's two or three that need to come out there.
Alright, so I would get in touch with John and Robin and make sure we, uh, get stuff to the next meeting.
Perfect, thank you all very much, have a nice night.
Very nice project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, last on the list is Garden Lane Development. Formerly known as Hoffman Property, this is a discussion of a residential site plan, location Old Crampon Road at Garden Lane.
Good evening. I also had some technical problems, so, uh.
You like old school. The traditional way.
Yeah, traditional.
There you go.
We'll go half, half and half.
It's okay, I like to, I like to render it.
So, uh, this project is for, uh, a proposal for twenty residential units, um, on a, a two-story building on a sixty-eight thousand, almost sixty-nine thousand square foot, uh, property, a single property, there's no subdivision required on this at all. It's located, um, it's located on Garden Lane, uh, near Crampon and Arthur Avenue. And again, it's a, it's a single property about, uh, almost sixty-nine thousand square feet. So let me just go back in time a little bit, uh, there was a, there was a proposal presented to the board in nineteen eighty-six for a similar, a very, very similar project of twenty units, uh, on the same site, and a lot of the, a lot of the things that were presented there and, and ultimately approved by the board, uh, you'll see in this application. Uh, so that, that consisted again of twenty units, two-story building, which we're proposing also a two-story building, uh, with a basement and, uh, on, onsite parking. So throughout the years, obviously, some of the zoning requirements have changed and gotten a little more strict, so we did modify it a little bit. Uh, the setbacks, the side yard setbacks have gotten a little bit larger, so now we're a little bit further away from the property, a less, a smaller buildable area, which we've respected and, uh, uh, put our building on. So again, basically what our, uh, uh, the size of the building also that we're gonna propose tonight is it's about a thousand square feet larger than the building that was propos- proposed under the Hoffman decision. And we added a little bit of program to, uh, the building, and that's basically some community spaces within the building, a community room, uh, some offices that can be used by the tenants of the, of the facility, and that's really about it. We provided additional parking, uh, since the last application to meet the one point five parking spot requirements, uh, as the, as required by the zoning code, we've actually exceeded it, we've provided, we have twenty units, we're required to have thirty parking spots, we have, uh, we have proposed, um, forty-four, uh, with a twenty-unit site, so we're well, we're, we're well in exceeding it, just to take into consideration visitors, guests, some people might have, uh, more people, and if I can just flip this over to the site plan. So you can see, uh, you can see on here, we have plenty of parking, we're utilizing the same ingress point, ingress points that were on the Hoffman decision, they were actually in a very good spot.
Oh, he can't hear you, sorry.
Okay.
Switch it on.
No, it's alright, so on the north side of the property, on the northwest side, you can see we're coming in off of a paper street onto our, onto our site, and then we access the, uh, uh, parking, the parking is directly outside of the building. And site circulation comes throughout the front and it comes through the side of the building, which our main entrance to the building is on the south, south side of the building. There's a little additional site circulation to the back of the building where we have our garbage, um, and the property does slope in the back. So there's access to the basement where we have a spot for maintenance equipment and storage and other things for the owner. Uh, and there's also some, uh, storage for the tenants in the building, so they could drive their cars up and put the storage, uh, stuff in storage if, if it's necessary. So our, our proposal includes twenty apartments, uh, twelve one-bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units. Uh, again, the, the apart, the apartments range from. Again, the apartments range from 750 square feet for the one-bedrooms to about 1,052 square feet for the, the two bedrooms. And again, that averages out to be about 875 square feet per unit. Trying, again, trying to mimic the Hoffman project, they were about 880 square feet for their units. So we're really trying to, you know, look at that project and the merits of that project, and what the board saw in that project, and bring it over to this project. So if I could, I'd like to just, I'll show, I'll just go to each floor. The, the previous one I flipped was the basement. There wasn't much happening down there. Again, it's, it's storage, part of it's unescavated and garage access. So if you look, if you see the plan, what we have is that we have our two-bedroom, we have the main entrance coming in the middle of the south portion of the building, coming into a main lobby directly opposite that, at the end is a community room that we were talking about. At the beginning, we have a mailroom, we have a handicap accessible bathroom, and that, and then to the left and to the right start our apartments. The two bedrooms are in the middle portion of the building, there's four two bedrooms in the middle, and we have three on the west side and three on the east side, one-bedroom units. All the units in this application have balconies, and as you can see in the rendering, what we tried to do is we tried to do a lot of movement on the, on the elevation, so it has a residential feel to it, and it breaks the scale down of the building and it brings it down to a human level. It's not one big long building, which sometimes we see in these kind of developments. Second floor is pretty much identical to this floor. The only difference on the second floor is where we have the community room, we just have a couple offices that will be used, that can be used by the tenants of the building, and otherwise it'll be the same layout for the two-bedroom units and the one-bedroom units. And the last drawing I had was a drawing of the elevations, which I'll flip to. So the top elevation would be this elevation that you're seeing here on the rendering. The main entrance is on, is in the middle, and then opposite that is the, the north elevation, and then if you can see on the lower-left corner, that elevation right there, that has the garage where you have access to the mechanical room or the, sorry, the service room, and there's, there's an egress door, and then there's an access to the storage room, a small storage room, again, for the owner. And again, you can see we've tried to make it a little playful with the elevations, have a little movement in the elevations, and break up the scale of it, and try to, you know, give it a little character.
Now, the properties that back up to this, the residential properties that back up to this for Old Crompaw, what, what view are they going to see of this?
They're going to see the top view, they're going to actually see this. And the reason-
That'd be right up to their, their parking lot would be right up to their property line?
The, the part, the parking lot, let me just go back to the site plan. Go back here so I don't get in trouble. So the parking is actually, the parking is actually on the, on the building side, the pass-through is on the bottom side, and we purposely located the building orientation like this because we wanted to have the entrance closer to the neighbors. It's a wooded area, it's got a lot of screening to it, and the reason we did that is because we also have our recreational area in the back on the north side located right there, and if there's any activity, if there's any noise or anything, it pulls it away from the residential people that are already there. So we all want to, we don't, we tried to get that away from the, I don't think there's going to be much traffic, much noise on the, on the front of the building side. I think everybody's going to either be, you know, for outdoor activities, going to be in, on the balconies, or they're going to be in that area right there. And again, having the recreational area right off the community room is a good thing, in case somebody's having a party or, you know, wants to do an indoor/outdoor gathering.
I have a couple of questions if you're done with your presentation. These are rental units or market units?
These are going to be rentals.
Rental units, okay. You're stating that you're, you're applying for a total of 20 units based upon the previous decision of the town board when they rezoned this property?
Correct.
That consisted of 18 units as of right, and you did mention that on your plan, and you got a two-unit density bonus, not you, but the, your earlier approval from the town board included a two-unit density bonus, with those two additional units bringing you up to 20 being designated under the town's then-existing affordable housing program. So my question is, how do we, how do we put the old density bonus into effect today when we don't have an affordable housing program to give you that additional density? I'm not sure what the answer is, but I noticed that. So that's one issue I have. You answered the question of what these units were for. Your plan, I think, needs additional work to show, your drawing seems to stop at the property line and doesn't really show the access into the, into Garden Lane, so we would need to see, you know, how you're going to handle that. It seems to me that it's a narrow set of driveways that you've got on here. I'm not sure it's adequate for what we're talking about. You've got one looping up into the, that's a town right-of-way on the north side?
It's a paper street. It's not a right-of-way, it's a paper street.
Okay, and is that, when you say a paper street, does that imply that you have the ability to use that as an access area?
I believe so.
Okay, but is that a driveway which you're intending to put there? Because I think that needs to be clarified. I don't necessarily need an answer for it tonight, I just want to raise the issue for you.
Yep.
That we need to think about that as well.
So just-
That paper street will be paved?
Just, just the entrance coming into our site. We, you know, we could, we could access our site directly from Garden Lane, but it seemed like it was a pretty good proposal to come in off of the paper street. If that ever gets developed, we'd like to have a little less traffic coming in off of Garden Lane and coming, you know, off of the paper street from both directions. So that, that, that road right there, coming in, there is an ingress and egress on the property, so that would be, we would consider that our ingress, the one on the north side, and on the, on the south side, southwest side would be the egress to the site. So those are, those are adequate for the town standards. The width of that is adequate for the town standards. The, the distance between the two parking, the parking areas on the, on the west side of the facility, that is adequate also for, for a drive-through. And at the, at the bottom, I think we have more than enough, way more than enough space to-
Wide enough to me.
Are you saying they're one-way?
Yeah. There'll be assigned parking spots, so they could, it would easily be a one-way.
Looks like it's one, I mean, just-
He's saying it's one-way, though, so it's one.
One, oh, you see, so you're coming in and-
And that's when the one is egress.
Correct.
One, which, you're coming in on the north?
You're coming in on the north.
And out on the south?
And heading out on the south, correct.
Okay.
That's it.
Seems still narrow.
I can make it a little bit wider for you, if you like.
Well, what about emergency access? Is it wide enough for them?
No.
It has to be, it has to be, we have to be 20 feet, so, I mean, again, if we had to make that a little bit bigger, we could widen that out. I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at that and we'll double-check that.
You know, at some point, if this, you know, we would normally refer this to our emergency agencies, and they, they will comment on that.
Understood.
Well, when it was Hoffman, did they comment on it? When it was Hoffman, did anybody know?
It was a different layout for parking and everything.
He was still in high school.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It shows the-
1906.
I could see.
Well, this is what we-
Yeah, no, I understand, but I mean, it does show it as a round, so.
True.
Totally different.
Right.
Yeah, there's no 20 acres on.
I mean, those are all the comments, my initial comments. I'm sorry, you're the architect, right?
I have the, the site plan from the other one, if you want to quickly pick a look at it.
Thank you.
This would be the ingress point, egress point, and it was just kind of, you know, similar, it was, it was a one-way in, one-way out, so, but, you know, nevertheless, we can definitely make that a little bit wider to provide emergency access, and probably the right thing to do.
The orientation of the building has changed, though, right?
Yeah. The orientation of the building has changed, and the reason why is the side yard setbacks have increased since, and I think, I think they had maybe 25, and we were, we're up at 50 now. So we had to change it to accommodate, I mean, the buildable area is a lot smaller.
I think we got a lot to absorb here. Probably wouldn't be a bad idea for us to, I don't think we need to go out as a group, but individually go out and take a look. I know that stretch of road, part of it was paved, I think, by the town.
Pardon me?
Well, Garden Lane has always been an issue, who's paving what.
Right, right.
That's right.
I think half is town.
That Old Crompaw has just been paved because of the fluoride plant, and that's all just been replayed.
So I think there's a lot to look at here.
Didn't part of Garden Lane get resolved with the Bluebird bus folks as to who owned which part of the-
I think only the front part.
Up on the, up closest to the-
I think the back end.
Bird bus.
Bird bus, yeah, they're all the, you were out there, weren't you?
Yeah. They, they're raising the roof, they're doing a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, it looks like they're coming along. But I think the front end was, I think it's the back end that's-
Right.
If I'm not mistaken. But I think there's site distance issues out there, there's a lot of-
There's a lot of issues.
Yeah, a lot of struggles out there. All right, so maybe individually we could all take a ride out there.
Take a ride and take a look.
Yep, then we got, there's obviously a lot to absorb here, but, and again, you're the architect for the project?
We are, yeah, Demofsky Architecture, yep.
Who's doing the site work?
We're, we're going to engage a site civil engineer, probably Hudson Engineering, but we're not, we're not at that point yet.
Yep.
We just wanted to get the project into the board and try to get some comments back before we engage them to do our stormwater management, any of our site, site work and things that you-
You're working with Mike Stein?
Yeah, Michael Stein.
All right, so you're going to want him to start looking at the flow of that? You really, I, I don't know how it would work with the private road or the, who owns?
We'll have to check, I believe the town owns that.
That part?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it is the town, right? The, the paper road?
All right, so we got some homework, sounds like you got some homework.
We got the issue, the number of units.
Yeah, the density, yeah.
Yeah, by, by the way, the town just removed a clause in the 300-39, which is the section that governs the management of the affordable housing units, which limited their application to units that were in there before 1994, I think it is. Town board removed that so that new units can go into that program. It, it didn't add in a set aside, which I think is part of what you're referring to with the older law, but it does allow units to go into that program and be managed by either the house, our housing board or other entities.
We could, we could get two from this.
Correct.
Okay. That's desirable in my mind. Okay.
And I believe that when the owners were talking early in the project with the, was it the town attorney? They, they were saying that, they were saying that, I don't know, was it, it was part, it was the number of units, but they were, the Hoffman decision stood, and I, was it, do you remember if it was the number of units?
It says here, the town attorney has determined, this is coming actually from Robin? Sure, I'm sorry.
You're going to get in trouble.
Sorry.
So I'm just reading an email.
Yep.
It came from Robin, it says, "The town attorney has determined that the rezone stands allowing the 20 units, with the bonus two being affordable. You would have to apply to the planning board for a residential site plan proving out your proposed plan, provided there were no new environmental concerns or regulations that are different than in the 90s that should be achievable, but as in any approval process, there are no guarantees. Hope this gives you enough information to make your decision. Love, Robin." I added, I added the "love."
I get it, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
All right, so we got a lot of work to do.
That's it.
Is there, is there anything other than the things that you had mentioned that you, you'd like us to add on or take a look at in a little more detail or bring clarity to?
Oh, what's, what's the-
I know there will be, I know, but I'm just saying offhand.
Forgive me, Dan Ciarcia, I don't remember, what's the sewer situation over there now?
It's a forced main.
It's all, it's in?
It's in.
Yeah, the forced main's in there, and probably that also played into this thing not happening in the 80s, is there was no sewer over there back then, so.
It's there.
But I'll have to, they'll have to do the analysis because it's a low-pressure system, so, you know, that'll be part of the detailed engineering they need to do.
Okay.
But it's available.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we're going to have to start formulating some questions. We'll go out and take a trip.
Okay.
And we'll see you soon.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
That's right. By then, it might be cold.
Thank you, guys, goodnight.
Take care, guys. The motion to close the meeting.
Motion, second.
All's in favor.
Hi. Thank you all.